Good evening. Before we begin our school board meeting this evening, would you please join us as we pray before our meeting? Father, we thank you for the many blessings you've given us and we thank you for the time that we had to be here and we thank you for the kids that are entrusted to our care. We pray, Father, that you, as we start a new year, that you keep our kids safe and our staff safe through this year and give us a good year for the children and for our teachers and staff here. Help us as we make decisions that we make with your wisdom. These things we ask in the name of Christ. Amen. I'd like to call the meeting to order and first item on the agenda is for recognitions. Dr. Clendini?
Thank you, Mr. Vought. Best part of starting a school year is to recognize some things that happened last school year. Tonight, we're recognizing over 150 students, grades five through 12, that received all As. So hopefully you received a letter from me. Mrs. Brown, now we'll call the class up to come up and we'll have you stand up on stage. When you do get here, students, we do ask you to do a couple of things. One, introduce who brought you. So if I'm Will McGinnis, I'd say, "Hi, I'm Will McGinnis and tonight I have my mom and dad with me." Or if you want to call them by their first name, great. We would appreciate that. That would help immensely for people to know who's in attendance and we know that mom and dad, you do a lot behind the scenes to make this happen. So with that, we'll begin.
Okay, let's bring up the 17, 18, 5th and 6th graders. So if you were a 5th or 6th grader last school year, please come up to the stage.
Tyler, all the way down by Mr. Vought. Here you go. Good, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Hey, thanks for coming. Hello, everyone. You're welcome. Thanks, thank you. There you go. Thanks, thanks, thank you. Hey, oh, thank you. Thanks, thanks. All right. Mrs. Brown, now you brought everybody.
I should have divided this group by grade level.
Here, go, start the second row, right, go ahead. All the way, yeah, head on down that way. Yep, thanks. Thank you, thank you. Oh, there you go. Thanks, thanks, thanks. Hang on a second, I gotta grab three more pencils. Excuse me, guys. All right, sorry, Cooper. Yeah, thanks, thank you, and thank you.
Okay, we'll start with the front row, then once you guys have had a chance to introduce yourselves and who you came with tonight, when you get to the end of the row, we'll have you guys walk off the stage so that we can see the people in back, all right?
What do we do? Introduce yourself, what grade you're in, and who you brought tonight?
Hi, I'm Lilly. I'm in 7th grade and my dad and my mom brought me here tonight.
Hi, I'm Chloe and I'm in 7th grade and my mom brought me here.
Hi, I'm Cooper. I'm in 7th grade and my mom and dad brought me here.
Hi, I'm Luke and I'm in 7th grade and Mandy and Chris brought me here.
Hi, I'm Madeline and I'm in 6th grade and my mom and dad.
Hi, I'm Lila and I'm in 6th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
Hi, I'm Hadley. I'm in 6th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
Hi, I'm Ella. My mom and dad brought me and I'm in 6th grade.
Hi, I'm Alex and I'm in 7th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
I'm Maddie and I'm in 7th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
I'm Sophia. I'm in 7th grade and my mom, from Northwood, who's a Cub Academy teacher, and my twin brother brought me tonight.
[laughing]
Hi, I'm Grace. My mom, dad, and my grandma and grandpa brought me tonight and I'm in 7th grade.
Okay, so now this row, go to the back. Back row, come forward.
You guys, they'll pass it on to you. Take one step up.
Oh, hi, my name's Tyler and my mom and dad brought me.
Hi, my name's Katie. I'm in 7th grade and my parents brought me.
Hi, I'm Madison Pryon. I'm in 7th grade and my mom brought me.
Hi, I'm Erica. I'm in 7th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
Hi, I'm Brooke Orton. I'm in 7th grade and my parents brought me.
I'm Leely Christakis and my parents, both my parents brought me.
I'm Madeline and my mom brought me.
I'm Chase and my mom and dad brought me and I'm in 6th grade.
I'm Carter. I'm in 6th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
I'm Jacob. I'm in 6th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
I'm Harja and I'm in 6th grade and my mom, dad, my mom, my sister, and my aunt brought me.
I'm Nathan and I'm in 6th grade and my mom brought me.
Hi, I'm Garrett Meehan and I'm in 7th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
My name's Haley Stewart. I'm in 7th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
Hi, I'm Sophie Reinhold and I'm in 7th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
Hi, I'm Channing Rucker. I'm in 6th grade and my mom brought me.
Hi, I'm Franco Torinoz and my mom and dad brought me.
I'm in 7th grade.
Hi, I'm Riley Flora. I'm from, I'm in 7th grade and my mom brought me.
Hi, my name's Hayley Stewart. I'm in 7th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
Hi, I'm Sophie Reinhold and I'm in 7th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
Hi, I'm Channing Rucker. I'm in 6th grade and my mom brought me.
Hi, I'm Franco Torinoz and my mom and dad brought me. I'm in 7th grade.
Hi, I'm Reese Fritz. I'm in 7th grade and my mom brought me.
Hi, I'm Neepar. I'm in 6th grade and my mother and brother brought me.
Hi, I'm Riley Flora. I'm from, I'm in 7th grade and my mom brought me.
Hi, I'm Addie Lavarno and my stepmom, my dad, and my sister brought me.
Hi, my name's Hallie. I'm in 7th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
Hi, my name's Imma. My mom and my grandma brought me.
All right, now we're gonna get photo op. So here, we're gonna find a way to get three lines. If you were in 5th grade last year, come right here. Okay, kind of squeeze in, all right? And then 6th grade, sliding right behind them, and then if you're the tallest of the 6th graders, behind that. We gotta be able to see Mrs. Betts. She's gonna wave her arms right there in the middle. We gotta scoot over. Everybody scoot this way. Keep scooting, come. How far? Oh, you gotta squeeze in. Keep squeezing in.
Do we have the back row fill in on the front, on the side? Do you have to fill right in?
All right. So mom and dad, please get your cameras out. This is a great photo opportunity and we will also be taking a photo for the school's website. Mrs. Betts is right out in the back. All right, thanks, everybody.
Congratulations, current 6th and 7th graders. If you were a 7th or 8th grader last school year, please come up on stage.
All the way down to see Mr. Vought. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thanks, thanks, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, hello, thank you, thanks, thank you, thanks. Hello, Mr. Reese. Oh, thank you, thanks, thank you, thanks, thank you. Let's, Tyler, two walk all the way down. Thanks, thank you, Jacob, thanks. Thanks, let me use your name, Will. Thanks, thank you. Hey, Mr. Vought, how are you? Good morning. Thanks, thank you. Thank you, all right, you get to be first, Mr. Vought. You get to be last, I think, today.
My name's Nico and my mom and Brian took me. I'm in 8th grade.
My name's Gavin and my mom and dad brought me and I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Donovan and my mom and dad and brother brought me and I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Chase and Holly and Tony Miller brought me and I'm a freshman.
I'm Joseph and my mother and father brought me and I'm a freshman.
I'm Amelia Tisdale. I'm in 8th grade and my parents, my siblings, and my aunt brought me.
I'm Adriana and I'm in 8th grade and my, my mother and father brought me.
I'm actually Will McGinnis. I'm a freshman and my mom and dad brought me.
I'm Marissa Kelly. I'm a freshman and my dad and stepmom brought me.
Hi, I'm Ryan. I'm a freshman and my mom brought me.
Hi, I'm Kyle and my mom and dad brought me and I'm in 8th grade.
Kids, front row, go to the back and then every, there you go, let's...
My name is Anna and I'm in 8th grade and my mom and stepmom brought me.
Hi, my name is Emma Williams. I'm in 8th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
I'm Danielle Hensley. I'm in 8th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
I'm Abby Henderson. I'm a freshman and my mom brought me.
I'm Addie Marshall. I'm a freshman and my mom, my dad, and my brother Teddy and my sister Kami brought me.
Hi, I'm Josie. My mom and dad brought me and I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Derek and my mom brought me. I'm in 8th grade.
Hi, I'm Samantha. I'm a freshman and my mom and dad brought me.
Hi, I'm Zoe. I'm a freshman and both my parents brought me.
Hi, I'm Mallory. I'm in 8th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
I'm Madison Malat and I'm in 8th grade and my mom brought me.
I'm Aelyn Hendricks. I'm in 8th grade and my mom brought me.
I'm Corinne and I'm in 8th grade and my mom brought me.
Hi, my name is Zach and my mom and dad brought me.
Hi, my name is Audrey. My mom and dad brought me.
Hi, my name is Jolie. I'm in 8th grade and tonight I'm here with my mom Cassie, my dad Brandon, my grandma, and my little sister.
Hi, my name is Bill. I'm in 7th grade and my parents brought me.
Hi, I'm Olivia and my mom brought me and I'm in, I'm a freshman.
Hi, my name is Max. I'm in 8th grade and my mom and dad brought me.
My name's Dylan Funkhauser and my mom and dad brought me.
All right, let's do a photo op again, so we're gonna try to go three lines and we gotta be right here, kind of in the middle. Mrs. Betts is right there, so... Cut it by size and squeeze in. Yep, you guys, come on, come up here. Yep, right here in front. Come on in the front. Yep, perfect, perfect. Make sure that you can see, like, Mr. Cordless right there in the back. Can everybody, yep, there, perfect. All right, Mrs. Betts, okay. Thanks, everyone. Please exit that way.
Congratulations, current 8th and 9th graders. And if you were in high school last year, please come forward.
Thank you, thank you, hello. Ladies, hello, everybody, hello. Hello, sir. Hello, hi, hello, hi, hello, hi, hello, hello. All right, Jaclyn, you get to start.
Hi, I'm Alexandra Boardman. I'm a senior in high school this year and I am with my mom and my dad and my sister and brother tonight.
Hi, my name's Reanna Miller. I'm a sophomore and my parents brought me.
I'm Alina. I'm a sophomore and my mom and dad brought me.
I'm Amber. I'm a sophomore and my mom and dad brought me.
I'm Lizzy. I'm a sophomore and her mom brought me.
I'm Katie and my mom brought me.
I'm Jaclyn and I'm a sophomore and I came with my family.
I'm Josie. I'm a junior and my dad brought me.
Hi, I'm Simi. I'm a junior and my sister brought me.
My name's Emily Carter. I'm a senior and my parents brought me.
My name's Abby. I'm a junior and I'm here with my parents.
My name's Cash Nelson and I'm a junior and I'm the starting guard for the football team, so come out Friday and support us, please. Also, here with my family.
I'm Kindal Marias. I'm a sophomore and I'm here with my parents.
I'm Belma DeHarrick. I'm a sophomore and my, and my mom brought me here.
I'm Michaela Cadwell. I'm a sophomore and my mom and my sister brought me here.
I'm Mimi Shouse. I'm a ju, a junior and the world's best mom brought me here.
All right. Let's get two rows and get a picture. Scoot in, let's get two rows. One group's, yep, if you're taller, stay to the back. We gotta squeeze in a little bit because we gotta... Scoot up in front, okay, there you go. All right, can everybody see? Yep, that's okay. Thanks, everybody.
Next, we would like to recognize Anna Linville. Anna was the May 2018 Central 9 Student of the Month for having outstanding achievement in the Culinary Arts 1 class. Chef Smith from C9 says that she reliably sets a high standard in the kitchen at C9.
Hi, I'm Anna and I came with my family. I'm a senior. My mom and dad.
Anna, we get to have a picture right here. We should be able to figure this one out pretty easily. There you go, here's a pencil, too. Oh, gee, we're just, keep going, scoot over. All right, right here. Thank you very, you have some good work.
Next, we would like to recognize and congratulate students and faculty and staff of middle school and high school instrumental music department for being recipients of the Indiana State School Music Association All-Music Award for the 2017-18 school year. Mr. Tool, Mr. Kosch, and your student representatives, please come forward.
Hello. Here we head right down to Mr. Vought. Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Mr. Tool and I drove myself.
This is something that, this is our fourth year to win this award and it is the fourth year for the award, so it's really nice to be having four consecutive ones. What is really special about this is this award represents teamwork on everyone's part because that's what it takes to win it, but it also is very satisfying because in all of the criteria, we exceeded the minimum expectations. And these three people up here also, in one of those categories, for instance, is solo ensemble. All three of them, as middle schoolers, earned a gold with distinction at the state solo ensemble contest, which is actually a high school event. Sure, names and repeat it.
I'm Derek Moot and my mom brought me.
I'm Zoe Catlin and both my parents still brought me here.
I'm Luke and my mom and my other mom brought me.
I'm Gabby. I'm a senior and I came here by myself.
Hi, I'm Taylor Phelps and my mom and brother are here with me.
Hi, I'm Ian Hickey. I'm a junior and I'm pretty sure my mom's in the audience.
My name is Tim Kosch. I'm the high school band director and after you're done watching the football game next Friday, stay for halftime so you can see the marching band.
All right, we're gonna squeeze in and get a picture. Can you get all of us? Well done, everybody. Thank you, congrats. Congratulations. Congrats. Thanks, Zoe. Hey, thanks for coming out tonight. Thank you, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Kosch. Thanks, thank you, sir.
Then lastly, on the student's side of life tonight, we'd like to recognize the Franklin FFA Wildlife Team, who was recently named national champions. A year ago, they earned second at state. The team placed second at regionals, first at state, and earned a first-place national finish at Arcadia National Park in Winter Harbor, Maine. Coaches Levi Coons and Tom Beckman helped prepare the team for the contest. Individually, recent FCS graduate Sam Bordenkecker finished second and Cameron Carmack earned a third place. Congratulations to FFA Director Caitlin Pierce and team members Sam Bordenkecker, Cameron Carmack, Brody Wade, and Taylor Drake. The group's second-place team, the Honey Badgers, placed fourth at state. Their team members were Eric Stockhouse, Caleb Reed, Alex Perteball, and Mary Armstrong. We have any of the FFA members here? Come on up.
They're all here. Come on up. Congrats, everybody. Mary? Thanks for coming. Thank you, sir. You get to talk a little bit about the program.
Caitlin Pierce and this team set their goal, actually, a couple of years ago when I first got here. I didn't really know what wildlife was and so they've opened up a whole new world for me, as they told me they would. And Tom and Levi took over and the team is national, so couldn't be more excited.
Tom Beckman and I just made sure this guy stayed in check. He did all the coaching and I'm gonna let him say a couple of words. Hi, my name's Levi Coons. It was an absolute honor to get to coach these kids, all of them. They did a phenomenal job and it's, it's them that won the contest. They put a lot of hours in and a lot of hard work and actually a lot of studying over the summer on their own and went up to the contest, did everything they could, and, and just, just won it. It was awesome, so it was a privilege to be able to coach them and unfortunately, that's, that's the end for coaching these kids, but they're gonna go on to do great things, so still got Mary and Taylor next year, so see what we can do.
Hello, I'm Mary Armstrong. My mother bought me here. I'm a sophomore.
Short and sweet there, Mary. Hi, my name's Cameron Carmack. I'm here with my mother and father, Melanie Carmack and John Carmack. I've gotta give a big thanks to Levi for sure. He's, he's our coach and Tom for keeping Levi on track. And then a big, a big thanks to the rest of the team here. They, they put the work in, they made it all happen for us, so...
Hi, my name's Sam Bordenkecker and I'll be a freshman at Purdue University, the greatest university in the country.
Yeah, it's all right. Mr. Vought is...
I'm here tonight with my parents, Tony and Sandra, and I'd just like to thank my coaches and my teammates for the great experience.
My name's Brody Wade and I'm here with my father, Brian, and I'm currently a freshman at Purdue University. And, yeah, I was not looking forward to a 20-hour drive in the minibus, so that's why I flew back.
Hi, I'm Taylor Drake and I will be a senior, or I am a senior this year, and my parents, David and Colleen Drake, are here tonight and I just realized I'm gonna miss you all next year.
Let's get a picture. Right here, I wanna say congratulations. There's a little, I know you guys really wanted this pencil, I could tell.
I do, I might need this. I've been on it all night.
Thank you. All right, yeah. All right, let's squeeze in, we gotta be in front of the picture, all right. Well, congrats and thank you for being our first national champions. Great job, sir. Oh, it's right here. Oh, no, I don't want them to, here, mine.
Lastly...
Thanks. There you go. Take it back.
Lastly, tonight, we're going to recognize some of our new teachers to Franklin Community Schools this fall, so those that were able to be here tonight, if you would, please Trent, tell us your name, where you're from, and what you're teaching.
Hi, I'm Trent Moorhead. I'm from Aurora, Indiana. I'll be teaching high school math, so Algebra I and Algebra II, and coaching basketball at high school.
I'm Becky Cadwell. I'm originally from Cincinnati, Ohio. I've been teaching in Franklin schools for Cub Academy for a couple of years and this is my first year teaching as kindergarten in Creekside.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Sproul. I actually graduated from Franklin 2013 and this is my first year at, second grade teacher at Needham Elementary.
Hi, I'm Brett Roberts. I'm from Bedford, Indiana, and I will be teaching first grade at Needham Elementary and also coaching the soc, the girls' soccer team at the high school. That's why I'm dressed like this. I literally walked off the field and came over here.
Hi, I'm Megan Pritt and my mom and dad brought, no, I'm just kidding. I'm the new special education teacher, 8th grade, at the middle school. I grew up in Franklin Township, so I'm kind of FC. This is a new FC and this is my first year teaching.
My name is Jennifer Scott and I'm the new director of special education. I'm also a Franklin grad 27 years ago, not 2013. Very excited to be back home. I don't currently live here, but hope to, in the next couple of years, make this home again.
There you go. We're gonna get a picture. There you go. Here, I don't want you guys to feel left out and I just give the pencils away. Yeah. Hey, you're welcome. You can give them to a kid. All right, let's get one picture with all of us here. Rob, no. All right, thanks, everyone. Mr. Vought, that will conclude recognition. And this would be a good time, if you're looking to take an exit, this would be a perfect intermission break, if you will. If not, please stay for the meeting. We're gonna have fun the rest of the time.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is under the Public and Board comments. First of all, I would like to mention that two items, we have two items that are listed under Discussion Items that we may possibly be taking action on this evening. And that's under 7B, Change of Graduation Date, and 7C, the easement for walking trail near CBIS. So if there's anybody that would have any comments on those items, since they may be going into Action Items, that would be... now would be the time to... for any comments, or any comments on anything else that is on the agenda this evening. Seeing none, are there any comments from the board? Okay, the next item would be then for Board Comments under Music Council.
We do not meet.
Okay, Athletic Council, no date this month. Legislative Council, we didn't meet unless there's anything new. Okay, Superintendent Strategic Task Force.
We'll be meeting again in September as we look at goals for the coming year and things along those lines. But we did not meet prior to today's meeting.
Okay, and then for the Strategic Plan?
Employer Choice jumpstarts with subcommittee chairs into this month, and then first meeting with the full group will be in September.
Okay, thank you. Communication Committee?
We didn't meet. We have a new thought exchange that's gonna be going out soon to ask for topics for an upcoming safety forum that we're gonna have, that we don't have a date for that yet, but it will be coming out soon.
Okay, thank you. Collective Bargaining, did not meet. Okay, Central Eye and RDC, they were brief meetings and didn't have anything to do directly with the schools. The next item on the agenda is under Consent Agenda.
Mr. Vought, before you take action, just a couple of quick notes on items on the Consent Agenda. You'll find under J, Property Casualty Insurance. Did send those out to all of you. Increase this year was 3.19%. Part of that was a 2% increase on an inflation adjustment to building values, so the 3.19% was reasonable. And then also, the health plan rates for 2018 and 19, certified, non-certified administrative rates. Corporation picked up 5% on each of those for this year, and those rates are attached to your document as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Move for approval. It's been moved for approval. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is under Superintendent Reports, start of school. Dr. Clendening?
Thank you, Mr. Vought. Just real quick on three topics. Transportation, we had a much smoother start to the year than in past years. So congratulations to Mr. Dickinson and his team to put together great routes. We have consistency, and we are moving quite well in that area. Enrollment Projections, we are trending up, as we had hoped. We'll continue to monitor those through the first week of September, and the second Friday is the ADM Day, so Mr. Mercer and I are watching them, but numbers look promising at this point.
Thank you.
And Construction Projects, just to highlight anything, Mr. Sewell specifically, but summer projects are completed, and we're looking forward to getting into the fall. We do have the feasibility first report coming up in late September.
Okay, thank you. And we would like to thank everybody for, especially on the construction projects, getting those done in time for the start of school. And for all from the school corporation that helped with that. We appreciate that very much. Next item is Budget Workshop. Mr. Mercer?
Thank you, Mr. Vought. This is a little different one for us tonight than maybe in years past. Dr. Clendening, you gonna open up? And the primary reason for that is the state of Indiana has changed. As I reported the last couple of months, things are a little bit different this year, and so the budget presentation will be a little bit different as well. I did want to point out a couple of dates that are important tonight. Obviously, we're gonna do the school budget workshop and take action on a couple of items as it relates to that. September the 10th, we'll be back on a public hearing on the 2019 budget. On October the 8th, we're scripted to adopt the budget, and then we have to have that turned in by November the 1st. Actually, we'll have it turned in well ahead of that date. Some of these slides are the same as last year with different information, and this is the first of those. We have three funds now that make up our budget. We'll be working on our old budget through the end of calendar year 2018, but as of 19, which is this budget, we will have an Education Fund, an Operations Fund, and a Debt Service, the only holdover being the Debt Service. Education is primarily the functions within the classroom. Operations, those functions that are required to support what goes on in the classroom. I always do kind of a quick snapshot of the assessed valuation. This year, for only the second year that I've been doing this job, we actually have our real AV for 2018 pay 2019. We're up 3.38% this year, which is a really nice jump, and the highest jump we've had since 1314. You can see the last three years, we're really trending up in Franklin. I think a lot of the energy and excitement in Franklin indicates that that would probably be the case, but it certainly was. I also always share historical tax rates. I will tell you that this year, that will be adjusted a little bit. We have moved to max levy in our operations funds, and that will cause that to bump a little bit. Our debt service is up a little bit, as was scripted, and has been scripted that way for some time. Rainy day history, we're at the highest level in the history of the school corporation, which is great. We have worked hard to get it there. As I've mentioned to you many times, I think we are where we need to be, and we'll keep working to try to keep it close to that. General Fund Operating Balance, we're well above the board goal. This year, of course, will be 8.5%, and we're on target to hit that this year, if we can avoid any unforeseen circumstances. So that's kind of where we're at. The one thing that I did this year that I can do is kind of compare last year's transportation with this year's. Now, understand that transportation will now be embedded in the Operations Fund, so I've kept track of it separately because I think that helps me a little bit as we progress forward, but you can kind of take a look at the differences, and you'll notice down at the bottom, the total levy is up. Some of that has to do, in fact, a lot of that has to do with the state allowing us to move to max levy, which means that we can maximize the amount of money that we receive. I have included the actual, I'm sorry, the advertised tax rate from last year and this year, but when I did that, I've included transportation, bus replacement, and capital projects altogether. And so I know, I'm confident you had those memorized from last year, but just in case you didn't, those three combined last year were 59 cents, and this year, advertised rate is 64, so up just slightly. Capital projects, same deal. You'll notice the advertised rate is combined again, and you'll notice there is an increase in what we're asking for in capital projects, again, reflective of the max levy. And here's a look forward and backward, kind of. You might remember that I do this each and every year, but you're looking at the advertised rate this year compared to the advertised rate from last year in all of those funds, and the total amount of money. You'll notice that the Education Fund is $27 million. Our General Fund from last year was $34 million, and the reason for the drop is part of the General Fund will now move to operations and will no longer reside in education. So it's just a different look for us from compared to what we had had in the past. And I highlighted in yellow, our Operations Fund is being advertised at $15.5 million this year, so that's a break from what we've done historically. I would be happy to answer any questions, if you have them, and if I can answer them.
Do you have one comment?
Yes.
I really appreciate you and your staff. I know this has been a huge undertaking. There's been a lot of changes in your group that's affected. And so I just want to say thank you to you, and please pass along to your staff, because I know they certainly...
Thank you.
They did a lot of heavy lifting.
Thank you. I will. And Tammy Jackson deserves great accolades, as do all the ladies in our office. This has been a big change for them, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. The next item, then you'd be up again on your Action Items, Mr. Mercer, for notice of public hearing.
Yeah, slight change from last year. This is a Form 3, which we have always shared with you on the budget meeting, but the difference is this year, we don't necessarily have to advertise the public hearing on this document, but we will on a couple that follow. But this gives you a snapshot of what we're advertising as our rate. So the two items that follow are actually... and I'll just open up one. It's the authorization to advertise the public hearing for bus replacement and capital projects. And so I will, this evening, ask permission to approve both the resolution to authorize public hearing for bus replacement and capital projects. Roger, is it okay if I do those together tonight? Apparently, it is.
Can we add the two bus replacements together?
Yes. Okay. So I am here to ask for your permission tonight to advertise bus replacement and capital projects between now and our public hearing date in September.
Do I hear motion? It's been moved for approval. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, under Discussion Items.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. There is one action item that we need to address. It's not on the agenda. It is in the nature of a housekeeping item, which is ratification of the bond sale. As you know, the bond bid committee met on July 25th, 2018, to consider offers to purchase $5 million of our debt by way of bonds. The successful bidder is Stifel Nicolaus &amp; Company of St. Louis, Missouri. So the bid was awarded to that entity, and I would ask that there be a motion and a vote ratifying that action.
Do I hear motion? It's been moved for approval. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, under Discussion Items, Dr. Clendening, e-learning days for FCS.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vought. Over the past year, we've been talking about how to impact inclement weather days. And in addition, the state put out a grant opportunity for STEM initiative, and they required on that to look at e-learning days options. And e-learning days would be where the kids would be at home or be off-campus, continue to learn in a normal fashion of a day, and then come back and report back to the teachers. So we had a committee of Mrs. Sargent, Mr. Beck, Mr. Ahouse, myself, and then we had Mr. Sprout and Mr. Brown Nally kind of helping us think about e-learning days. And so at this time, if you remember last March, we had it just as an FYI for the grant. So tonight, I'm bringing it back as a discussion that we would consider for spring of 19, that we would embark on e-learning days for inclement weather only for us. And things that we did have to consider, what do you do with elementary? Because obviously, when the kids are in elementary, what are you thinking about e-learning days? Well, e-learning does not necessarily mean sitting on your laptop or iPad or phone at home. It could be a whole sundry of options, from physical activity to actually doing reading homework with the students. And so we've been looking at that. That's why Mrs. Sargent's group looked at some of those things along the way. Other things that we had to also consider were, what about EL learners in special education? Because they're required to have so many minutes with services provided, so we did have to account for that if a day would come about. So we've been looking at that and what that would look like. And in addition, we've talked to our teachers and staff, and I think everybody feels that we're ready for this opportunity. We're also gonna take away that last days of kind of learning loss. If we've all been here, and a snow day comes, and we tack it on at the end of the year, the kids are winding down, they're saying, "I don't remember that snow day back in..." whatever. So this will allow us to do more real-time learning. When I say real-time, though, it doesn't mean we're gonna be out like on a Tuesday, and on Wednesday, they have to have all their homework done. We're looking at providing a week of opportunity to bring that learning to fruition, and then the kids would submit their information back. That's also how the kids will be counted for attendance on an e-learning day, would be submission of their work that's required by the teachers. One way to stay in communication with mom and dad and the students will be through Google Classroom. Matt and his team have done a great job of looking at Google Classroom over several years, our learning management system. And so we're gonna require by December 31st of this year that all of our teachers have a Google Classroom up and running that would invite mom and dad in as a person to view the homework and different assignments activities. And the students would also learn how to access their learning opportunities. High school and middle school presently do a great job of that, but obviously, there'll be some work K through 6 on doing that. In addition, we are ready and poised to do this with the two newest members of our coaching staff. That's Megan Green and Ray Lane. They're both looking at technology, and they will both help our teachers and our parents marry the concept of e-learning forward. So I believe that our district is ready for this step. It is, like I said, only gonna be enacted if we have e-learning or inclement weather days. In addition, if we would have a series of days, more than four, we would actually then invoke back the calendar days of mislearning. So we won't do e-learning if we have a blizzard again, and we're out 20 days. We're not doing 20 consecutive days. We will look at four, and then we would continue to monitor that and come back to you and talk about that in general. But over the past several years, you know, we're talking less than two snow days that we've had. And this would not account for also the early-later arrival concepts. The kids would just come late, and we would not do anything with the e-learning. So at this time, I'd ask you to think about that. Next month, we would come back, and then the teachers will participate in an e-learning day. We may practice for the first time just to see what it looks like on September 7th, and then probably again in October, November. The kids would still come to school, the teachers would just do some different things to not engage fully in front of the classroom lessons, just to see how it would work for us to monitor to get any of the bugs out. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. In addition, we have the principals that were on the committee available to answer as well.
Dr. Clendening, if we have this policy on the books, do you foresee the new graduation pathways, students coming in, asking for the use of this?
It is a possibility, but right now, for us, it's only gonna be for that e-learning opportunity. We're not going to extend it out. We may, in the future, after we have one year or two years into this, I will tell you, the state's taking a broader perspective of e-learning. A lot of schools are using it as professional development for their teachers, while the kids are away, and/or acceleration of some content opportunities for these kids. Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is for the change graduation date.
Thank you. Wanted to kind of give you a little background on at least the proposal of graduation date. And I bring it up because it's already on the calendar, and that would be the main reason why it's brought up. So I don't know down the road what that scenario might look like based on our calendar, the way it's set, but it really stems from this last graduation, where we had four young ladies who were qualified for the state meet. All four of them could not go to graduation because graduation was on Friday night. Two of them were scheduled to speak in graduation and couldn't speak at graduation. I think we went to lengths to make sure that their experience was positive. They wanted to be at the state meet. That's, and if I was in their shoes, I'd have done the same thing. But I think that scenario, just it ate at me all summer, just thinking about that scenario happening all over again. So the state track meets flip-flops from Friday night. So the state track meets flip flops from Friday night to Saturday night. So it's guys one night, girls the next night, and then it'll flip flop the next year. So this year, and we're in line for the boys' state championship track meet to be on the night of graduation. I don't know where they're at. I know at one point, we had like 17 out of 18 years, we had kids and the, boys in the state track meet. We had juniors this past year who went to the state track meet. Where the likelihood is very high that we are going to have guys who qualify for the state track meet this year, and they're not going to be at graduation. So I don't like that scenario again. We, but if we moved it to Saturday night, we'd be in the same scenario with girls again. So what I would like to do is to be able to move that to a Saturday morning and start that roughly at 10 o'clock or so in the morning. I did some research on just what a lot of schools in our area have done. The large majority of them are the weekend before, so they're finished before Memorial Day. So we're in a small group that's after Memorial Day graduating. But of that group, we were the only one that was on Friday night that I could find in, really, the, the central Indiana area. Some went to Saturday and went to Saturday morning. So kind of looking at that option and talking to different people, that seemed to work out well. The problem with that whole weekend is it is a little more restricted than the weekend before, where events aren't, state events and IHSA events aren't as, or they're more flexible that weekend before Memorial Day. Not so flexible when you're talking about state track meets and things like that. So, so we would like to, to try that for this next year, to, to try and help out with that scenario and then whatever the calendar might bring in the future. So it's really, I'm kind of just requesting for this next year to do this. And then I don't know what, what the future holds for that date. But I, I'd take any questions or...
So Mr. Ray House, do we have, if we go Saturday morning, does that impact the baseball?
It, it, it could potentially do that. We called, and, and that is not a very flexible event either. I'm very confident in our baseball team. I think we've won the sectional once or twice in the last 20 years as opposed to, I don't know. It's, there's softball with semi-state would be that weekend, but they are flexible with that date. It's a one game, that's a one game semi-state. So we, there's potential with baseball there, too. So I don't know that there is a really good fix on either of those two days, but...
Have you looked at Sunday at all?
We have not.
Way back in the dark ages, that's when we always had come into that.
Yeah, and I know that was a longtime tradition in Franklin as well. So that might be something for us to research as well. I don't know. We, the, we want to move, move pretty quickly because parents want to, to know what that date is and...
Did you say that that would begin not this school year, but next school year? Or is it?
It would be for this year. It would be for this, this school year.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and so... You, so you're, are you wanting to keep it? I mean, you're wanting to change it to Saturday this school year? But that doesn't mean that it would be Saturday going forward? Or is that what you want?
Not necessarily, not that it would have to be. I haven't really looked at years beyond that or what even what our, I don't even know that our calendar is set for the, the next year. I'm not, I don't believe so. I don't think it's out. So I'm just looking at the, the calendar as it is now.
So you're saying with, with the baseball, there would be a potential conflict with baseball?
There could be.
Even on Saturday morning?
Yeah.
If, if, if the team advances?
Yeah. We called today, and there's, depending on what game they played, and it, there could be a, a problem there as well. So met with Bill, I've talked with him about that one, so we called down there. And that's not as flexible on their times in the way that that's set up. But, so it could, it could potentially impact that.
But you don't have a feel for then for, for Sunday versus Saturday?
Yeah, I haven't really pursued that date. We were moving it, I don't know, moving it a couple of days, if that matters. I mean, that's something that we could look into, if that was a move that the community wanted to, to make, or if we wanted to go to that, I don't know. We hadn't, we hadn't looked at Sunday. We were just trying to move it off of the, the dates that were, that have just been conflicts year after year here.
I agree with you, but the spirit of what you're going. Yeah, because I did so bad. And it's not the only time we've had conflicts. Can't hear it, so. Give it to your judgment on what's best. I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I...
The echo.
Yeah, I don't know what conflicts...
I just said I, I agree with the spirit of what she's going at, which is, there's a conflict, let's change it.
Right.
I don't particularly care. I mean, they are in a better position to say when it is than I.
I'm not sure what issues moving it to a Sunday would be. There were not, I don't know if I came across any schools that went to a Sunday graduation. I don't know if there are reasons why people have moved off of Sunday graduations, if that creates some kind of issue with the community. I feel like moving it to a Sunday was maybe, maybe that has more of a community impact. I don't know. So I didn't really consider moving it to the Sunday, but that would certainly clear us of all IHSA events.
I think that would be my only concern about the Saturdays, that potentially we could down, even, you know, we could have a conflict, and then we're just switching groups of kids that may not be able to come to commencement. That would just be my concern. I'm okay with moving it. I think that's a good idea, but I'd like to make sure everybody could come, no matter what sort of their end or what event they're, they're doing. That would, that's what I would like to do.
Yeah, and I think long-term, the only way to assure that is to go to Sunday or not be on that weekend. The weekend before are all events at which communities all schedule around that. So there's sectional events, and what they do is plan those events around graduation. But when you move to that next weekend after Memorial Day, there, those events tend to not be flexible. So the only way would be to move it to Sunday or to move it to that weekend before and be done before Memorial Day.
But we, we, we definitely, as, as the others have said, and have, have used, as you have said, we want to make the move to, to affect as few kids as possible, hopefully not, hopefully not, although we hope the baseball team would do, you know, have a great season and all that.
Yeah.
But is it reasonable to change, to set the date for Saturday for this year and then look, a more in-depth look at either the Saturday or Sunday thing in ensuing years?
That was kind of my plan. I felt like, just looking at it, like, to me, moving a school event to a, a Sunday and doing that, I don't know if I'm off base, but it just seemed like that was more of a, or what, what people want to do on Sundays or whatever, if that impacts anything. So my thought was moving to Saturday and then reassessing the scenario and seeing like what we wanted to do moving forward. That was, so, that was my proposal, moving it to Saturday in the morning, being over by noon, with the potential that that could maybe not impact baseball or softball or something if possible. But, but the reality is if they're, if, especially baseball, if they're there, more than likely that will conflict with baseball.
I mean, we're not going to probably find a date that's conflict-free. Even if you move it to Sunday, people have, might already have, you know, already have personal things that, so there may be a conflict there.
No.
So I, I, I trust your judgment. If 10 o'clock Saturday morning seems to be the least impactful, then let's do that. If you don't fill that away, then I'll let you make that call. Okay, Mr. Young, if we, if we wanted to vote on this, do we have to literally move it to an action item? Or can we just accept a motion?
I believe having announced at the beginning of the meeting that you may take action at this time, that you don't need procedurally to do anything more on that.
Okay, so...
You can just entertain a motion at this point.
So we would entertain a, a motion on moving that if anybody would, would like to do that? Move to, to approve this? Changing? Okay. You making the motion?
I'm making a motion to...
We've got a motion and to approve moving the graduation from Friday night to Saturday morning. Do I hear any discussion?
And this is just for this school year only, then we'll kind of readdress?
It's just for this school year only?
Just, just for this school year. We will reconvene and look at possible dates beyond 2019 when we do the calendar.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Ray House. Appreciate you thinking about that. Yep.
And this might be another opportunity as we look at e-learning with weather to, to get it on a Thursday or something like that, if we want to do that. There are a lot of options, so we'll make sure the calendar committee fully vets those and get those back to you for final decision after 2019.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda under discussion items is item C, easement for walking trail near CBIS.
And Mr. Taylor, if you'd like to come on up, too. So the city's working on expanding a walking path that passes along Jefferson?
Jefferson Street.
Yeah. And, and cuts through a, a small portion of, of the Custer Baker property. And they approached me a, a few months ago, asking for a temporary construction easement for that purpose. So I'll let you describe that a little bit more. I'm having trouble finding my, my diagram.
Okay. Well, the, the project actually is a, it's a multi-use path on the, excuse me, multi-use path on the south side of Jefferson Street. Actually, there's an existing five-foot sidewalk through most of that area. And what the city's planning on doing is doubling that up, so it'll be a 10-foot wide path, excuse me, and continues all the way to the intersection with 144. And then on the south side, there's going to be a new five-foot wide, more of a, more of a walking path that will go along the same length of the property and, and basically give a continuous sidewalk all the way from downtown Franklin out to 144. So the project is scheduled to let next May, with construction to happen mainly during the summer and be completed by the end of the construction season.
So I, I apologize, they don't have the, the map ready for us, but there is a small piece of, of property that runs right alongside the, the assisted living home there, right on Jefferson Street. It's a very small parcel. It's like...
It's approximately three one-hundredths of an acre, about 1,300 square feet, and it's temporary only for construction.
So I guess our, our recommendation is...
Does it change the, the, the traffic flow for the schools?
This does, there's no impact on transportation at all. This is on the sidewalks.
So they, they made an offer to, to purchase the easement from us. It's been our practice in the past, when it benefits the community and benefits us, to, to donate temporary construction easement. So my recommendation would be that we consider donating that easement for, for this project?
Okay. So we, we, again, we had mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, so as being an item that, that we might take action on. And so, do I hear a motion? Move for approval? It's been moved for approval. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda would be for the board administrative comments. First of all, the board, the comments. Okay, administrative, Mr. Mercer, Skyward transition complete.
Thank you. I am pleased to announce that in large part, the payroll transition for Skyward is complete. We're still working other areas. Kudos primarily to Carrie Hoffman, who's been working about 60 hours a week all summer long to make this happen. It was a large undertaking. The first time in 30 years, we've made a change of this sort. I do have a few more documents for you to sign tonight, as we missed a couple groups as we made that transition, but I think we've got that rectified. We are on to other areas. It's taken a real team effort, Melissa Kessel, Carrie Hoffman, Cami Hoffman, Tammy Jackson, HR, to make this transition. It's going well, and will be fully functional, hopefully by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is under calendar, Dr. Clendeney.
Thank you, Mr. Vaught. Real briefly, next, on this Wednesday, we have our first late arrival, early release for our school district. And just wanted to make sure everyone knows that we do provide after-school care at the elementary settings. If a parent needs that option, please just reach out to their building, and we'll make accommodations. Now, we have coffee with the superintendent. We're going to go to 1823 Bakehouse, which is right next door to the bike shop, is where we're going to, to be at 8 o'clock. And it's an open conversation about in and happenings around our district, and we're looking forward to that. Also, coming up later this month, next Friday, we have the, or next Thursday night, we have the induction of the Franklin Community High School Hall of Fame. And then we have a tailgate community party on the 24th as we host Shelbyville and that football game. So please, community, come on out as we induct the newest class. Quarterly board visits will be at the middle school in September. The last Friday in September, we'll be with Mrs. Holman and her team as we celebrate and learn more about our middle school journey. And then as we talked about in our July board retreat, October's coming up, and we looked at having an October and February regular scheduled work sessions from now on. And in October, we're looking at maybe that third week, which will be Tuesday or Thursday, if it would please the board on one of those two dates. If not, we can definitely find a, a time when everyone can get together. And that will be looking strategically at the district and where, where we're moving. And the last one is just a reminder to the community, it's a deadline to file for school board elections will be next week on August the 24th at noon. And those two seats are Needham Township and Union Township.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaught.
Okay, now for public comments, for anything, doesn't have to be, have been on the agenda, anything that would be on your mind. Seeing none. Mr. Thompson's not here to make the golden commotion, but we will close. Thank you very much.